Our zoo is so accessible. The fees to get into the zoo are reasonable relative to other entertainment or educational opportunities in the LA area. If you want us to support ourselves, we can do other things to create revenue, but you're going to have to remove a large sheet of rules and policies that the city lays on us so that we can do that with the existing staff and with the flexibility to meet the needs of the market. This exhibit, though, is going to be much more than an elephant display. The interpreting program will address conservation of Asian elephants, which are dwindling to less than 30,000 right now, and they're disappearing every day because of the conflicts with people in those regions. You heard from one of our elephant keepers, who goes to Southeast Asia and works with the public there to make it more possible for elephants and people to live together in the declining habitat, and then he brings that knowledge and that experience back.
Stating that he is not yet prepared to vote on the matter, District 10 Council Member Herb Wesson asks for a review of the item by the Budget and Finance Committee.
I just hope, like Bill said, a little more diplomatically than I would say it. And, no, 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 no. Let me say it, that Ms. Hahn, a few months ago, good people, we had a debate on trying to raise millions of dollars to help keep kids out of gangs. And the debate did not last four hours, and the debate did not have the attendance that's here today. So I hope that when we talk again about the human billys, and we will have that discussion again, that I see a lot of the same faces here then that I see today. I, I voted for this project the first time that it came around. But with all honesty, I'd have to say, given what I've heard from both sides today, I don't think I'm prepared to vote. I still have some questions, and the fact that Halle Berry called me has nothing to do with me now sitting on the fence.
What'd your wife say about that one?
As an aside, I just thought that I would throw that in. But we also have a fiduciary responsibility, and so I think that it does make sense that we would ask Mr. Parks to review this, quickly come back to us, and let us know what the financial ramifications of this would be. Mr. Alarcon said earlier that this is basically a choice between having elephants in the zoo, period. Where are you? Yes or, or no? I submit to you that it could be bigger than that. I mean, the question, it is a big picture. You know, if we do do this, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't, do we close all zoos? Do we, next time, is it the tigers? I might be supportive of just shutting all the zoos down. Just don't let the snakes go or the gorillas, and I might be able to live with it. But I do think, seriously, we've got some important questions that we have to ask ourselves as to how we're going to move forward in the future. But again, I would request, if Mr. Parks would be amenable, that we would take this, send it to your committee, so that you would come back and let us know exactly what it's going to cost. And I think for me personally, it would afford me the opportunity to hopefully get some answers to questions that, you know, one side says this, the other side says that. And if I had a few more days to try to get, sort that out, it would make it easier for me to decide as to how I would vote on this measure. So I don't know where Mr. Labange is or Mr. Cardenas, and you two should be commended for articulating your positions as well. But I would ask the two of you, as a courtesy to a member, if you were so inclined, Mr. Labange, that we would have Mr. Parks review this and quickly send it back to council. And I would hope, again, the next time we have a debate about the human billys, that that debate be four hours, and that debate have a full, a full audience in the House.
And indeed, the motions concerning the zoo were sent to the Budget and Finance Committee for review, and are scheduled to come back to council the first week of December. L.A. City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. You can watch city council meetings live or view past meetings by going to the city's website at lacity.org and following the instructions for video on demand. And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m., and on Sundays at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending November 21st, 2008. On behalf of Michael Flynn and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Last year, there were over 42,000 new cases of AIDS in the U.S., and HIV infections rose sharply, especially among youth. A quarter million more people may be infected and not even know it. Most of these infections were from unprotected sex, which spreads the disease from one person to all of their partners, to all of their partners, and so on. So if you think unprotected sex with one person isn't a big deal, remember, they're not the only person you're sleeping with. Stop AIDS. Protect yourself, protect your partner.
On the streets, hanging with the homies, slinging drugs, doing drugs, doing time. This isn't what I wanted my life to be. I watched my homies drop like flies. I was shot with an AK-47, and I realized it didn't have to be this way. I made the transition from gangs to school. Someone help me, and someone can help you. There is hope, and you can make a difference.
Hello, and welcome to a new edition of Straight From the Tap. I'm Roy Wolf.
And I'm Marion McKenzie-Pyle. We're glad you could join us. Roy, you're designing a new garden, so you had fun with this episode.
I sure did, Marion. It gave me some great ideas. In semi-arid Southern California, water conservation will always play an important role. As a region, we've made solid strides to curtail water use, but as we experience the driest year in recorded history, the time has now come to take conservation to a new level, in essence, to better adapt to our natural climate and geography. Fortunately, adapting has never been easier or more fun.
The Metropolitan Water District recently launched a campaign, together with Rancho Santa Ana Botanic Gardens, encouraging the use of beautiful California native plants as a way of reducing outdoor water use. Marking the occasion was actress Rene Russo, who is a champion of California natives. The campaign also includes the launch of a new water sprinkler calculator on the Internet that teaches how to use just the right amount of water for your garden in simple, easy steps. It's all good news for your plants, your water bill, and the environment. And here now is Roy Wolf with the full story.
Actress Rene Russo is well-known for her starring roles in films such as Tin Cup and The Thomas Crown Affair, but at the launch of the Metropolitan Water District's Water Conservation Campaign, she proved that her favorite role is really as champion of California's natural heritage.
Less than 1% of landscape plants used are native to the state. I just have to say that again. Less than 1%, 1% of landscape plants used are native to our state. That's insane.
Metropolitan's news conference was hosted at the Rancho Santa Ana Botanic Gardens, an 86-acre facility in Claremont, dedicated to promote knowledge, conservation, and wise use of California's native flora.
And this garden offers proof positive that one can create an attractive landscape that uses far less water than a so-called "normal" garden, and we've been doing it for 75 years.
The conference marked a departure from the water agency's previous strategy, which had stressed indoor conservation.
On average, residents of Southern California overwater their yards, their plants by up to five feet of water per year. Imagine what that means. We drown our plants, we pollute our coastlines, and we waste precious water.
I'm a landscape maintenance company, and we are the ones that everybody hollers about for using all this water. But if they put in something different, and they worked with the architect, and we had the contract put in, contractor put in the right thing, and we had the nursery be able to supply it, and that's what we're talking about now. We're talking about being able to work together.
Working together is what the Metropolitan Water District hopes will happen, as people catch on that native plants are really a smart and attractive way to landscape.
It's reasonable, it's responsible, and the gardens are remarkable, and oh yeah, it's cheap.
Just how difficult is it caring for native plants? Bart O'Brien, Director of Horticulture at the Rancho Santa Ana Botanic Gardens, says it's really very easy.
Native plants will take a few years to really get going, to really perform their best, although a lot of our native perennials, as you see here, can be quite spectacular in their first year. The Desert Willow, this is a selection called Bubba. Very, very beautiful plant, grown for the nice foliage and then the large, showy flowers. There are selections in white, pink, dark purples, or really striking bi-colors. It's a very, very easy plant to grow. We're looking at a very drought-tolerant shrub here. This is actually of hybrid origin. It's Bacchus thompson, and it was developed and selected in Arizona, where it was introduced as a ground cover. However, here in California, in Southern California, it's more of a large shrub, but it's grown principally for the beautiful green foliage year-round. Very easy plant to grow. These are Pinus quadrofolia, the four-needle pinion. It's a fairly rare plant, just found in Southern California, in the mountains and down into northwestern Baja. It's a smaller tree. If you want a pine for a garden that's drought-tolerant, you choose a pinion, and it'll never get too big for the space. They do produce these nice small cones that do have these large seeds, which are edible, can be used as pine nuts for salads and whatever. Wonderful plant for a garden, very drought-tolerant once they're in. They're best in our hot, low-elevation areas with about deep watering once every month or so in the summer, but that's it.
Why is it more people don't know about native plants? Well, part of the reason is that not many nurseries carry them. But here at Tree of Life Nurseries in San Juan Capistrano, native plants are the specialty, and homeowners can find up to 500 selections.
The general public right now is learning more and more about native plants because they're interested in the ecology in general, conservation, recycling, this whole message all is one. The people that are planting with natives know what a difference it makes. First of all, from the very practical standpoint, they save a lot of water, and they see that right away. They see it on their water bill, and they can feel good about the amount of water they're using on their garden, because it's the appropriate amount of water.
Calculating exactly how much water is the appropriate amount has never been easier than with the Metropolitan Water District's new online calculator. The virtual calculator asks a few questions of the user, such as types of grass and soil found in the garden. It then produces a customized watering schedule that estimates how many minutes of watering will be needed on a month-to-month basis. Developed by the city of San Diego, this simple tool will save water and money by synchronizing sprinkler schedules and seasonal weather patterns. It can be accessed by visiting Metropolitan's website at www.mwdh2o.com.
We are hopeful that the more responsible watering will lead to less pollution in our oceans. Just imagine, residents overwater by about five feet a year. That's water that runs down the street, into the storm drains, out the rivers, and into our beaches. And then in the summertime, we're reading about F grades that some of our beaches get because of pollution. Well, this pollution originates with our watering. So if we can stop overwatering through the use of this calculator, and then emerging technologies in the future, we'll also reduce pollution, save water, and save money.
A little further south, another facility dedicated to teaching homeowners about the advantages and beauty of drought-tolerant landscapes is the Water Conservation Garden in El Cajon, near San Diego. Exhibits feature plants from five different areas of the world. Visitors can learn how to increase their home's value by enhancing its appearance and applying water-saving techniques. This surf-selection area is designed with seven different types of grasses, demonstrating how much water each variety needs to look its best. This section here features a typical Southern California backyard with a large lawn, little foliage, and an inefficient irrigation system. Right next to it is the same-sized backyard that has been redesigned using drought-tolerant plants and water-saving principles. Another of the garden's most striking features is this outdoor amphitheater, which seats 350.
What we wanted to do was to provide an amphitheater that was usable for a lot of different things for the garden, but then at the same time was a part of the educational message. And there's a lot of different drought-tolerant ground covers that can be used, and we thought, why not demonstrate them here? We needed to do something to help cover the slopes and to break up the expanse of the amphitheater, and thought that the ground cover would be a great way to do that, and so that's why each, each set of, each tier has its own different ground cover to be able to display that, and then they're all signed as a part of the educational message for the garden.
Ron Gestalem, CEO of the Metropolitan Water District, says education about water-thrifty ways to landscape our gardens couldn't come in a better time.
Is this, what it accomplishes is this. It begins the educational process to let people know that all is not normal, that we may need them to really conserve effectively. 10% is a good start, and it will help tremendously. And if people do that, it could actually avert the need to ever go to more, or more rigid campaigns.
The agency's long-term conservation strategy is multifaceted and includes a program to train professional gardeners in water-efficient landscape techniques, educational components that will reach approximately 300,000 students a year, movie slides that can be seen in about 400 Southland theaters, and television and radio advertisements that are currently broadcasting throughout the region. Metropolitan is hoping its conservation strategy for Southern California will pay off. That means reducing our outdoor water use by 10%, and making that choice a way of life, and not just something we do when we experience a dry cycle or drought.
We don't have to be penalized for conserving water. We can actually get more and use less. The beauty of our gardens in state don't have to be at the mercy of drought.
We can create a planted landscape that is more thrifty in its use of resources, including water, that is aesthetically appealing, that puts far fewer chemicals into our groundwater, and a landscape that we, as Californians, can take special pride because it looks like California, the place we are proud to call home.
This future belongs to all of us. It's not just me, it's all of us working together, and all of us have to take a very careful look at what we're doing and how we can contribute to what we need to be doing, and that's conserving.
Benjamin Franklin said in closing, "That when the well is dry, we know the worth of water." Let's not wait until the well is dry.
We hope you enjoyed our program about creative gardening choices that help us use less water and celebrate our natural heritage. Remember that by cutting back by just 10%, we can save enough water to supply a city the size of San Diego for a year.
For more information about water conservation and how to use a new water sprinkler index, please visit Metropolitan's website address coming right up. And stay tuned for a list of Southland nurseries where you can learn more about California's beautiful native plants.
That's our program for now. We're your hosts, Marion McKenzie-Pyle.
And I'm Roy Wolf. We hope you'll join us again next time. See you then.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council Meeting for Tuesday, November 25th, 2008. We welcome you here to the John Ferraro Council Chamber, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. I want to thank those council members who are here on time, pursuing to council rules. Those are Council Members Cardenas and Labange. Unfortunately, we're still waiting for the other council members, and I would like to ask them to come down right away. We're 10 minutes after the hour, approximately, and we're still waiting for Council Members Alarcon, Wezar, Parks, Smith, Weiss, Perry, Wesson, and Zine. We have Mr. Reyes excused, Ms. Hahn excused, Ms. Gruel excused, and Mr. Rosendahl excused today. I want to welcome our viewers on Channel 35, which broadcasts each of these meetings live through the city's cable system, and those members of the public who have also joined us here in council chambers. Let me make a special thank you and hello to Holy Spirit Catholic Church and Elementary School that is here in the back. We welcome you very much to our council chambers. Great to have you here, and we hope that it is not the last time. But let's give them a round of applause and thank them for, for being here as well. Why don't you guys stand up? Stand up for a second. You can see yourselves on TV. See? There you go. You can wave to yourselves. So you see each other. There you go. Good to have you here. We have Mr. Zine here. Thank you, Mr. Zine, for joining us. We're also available online at lacity.org, which has live streaming webcasts of our council meetings through the Internet. There's also a wealth of information there about city departments, information on how to improve the quality of life in your neighborhoods, and other information too at lacity.org. We also archive our past council meetings, so that is available to check out as well. If you need to go back and find out any information from our past council meetings, it's a new feature we added this year. And we also are available through audio, through your telephone, and you can call council phone at 213-621-CITY, and listen in to any of the council meetings and any of our committee meetings as well. Yes, Mr. Labange.
Great to counsel this start right here. May I introduce a very special guest?
Of course you may. I'd like to recognize Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much. We have a very special guest, a guest of the Armenian-American community here in Los Angeles, directed by the great Senator Jack Scott. I don't want everybody to stand upright at the moment here, but please welcome Sergio Nabetian, right here, all the way from Argentina, who's a guest here in Los Angeles. Give Sergio a big hand there. He's a counselor, deputy to the province of Buenos Aires, former city council member, very involved, and we welcome everybody, the whole delegation. Please stand up and be welcome to the Los Angeles City Council and observe us in our deliberations. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and welcome. Very nice to have you here. We're just awaiting Mr. Alarcon. We hope to begin shortly. Mr. Cardenas, I'd like to recognize this man.
I just wanted to welcome some of the community members from Heal the Bay who are here today, and to give them an opportunity to say hello to us in the city of Los Angeles, and so that they can help with their message. To all Angelinos, they've done some... Go ahead. You can go to the podium. I just wanted to point out that I've been challenging a lot of environmental organizations to get more involved in the Latino community, and to get more involved in giving bilingual information when it comes to our environment and how we impact the world. And I just wanted to say that they've done a tremendous, tremendous job in my district, and we've had incredible turnouts of people and volunteers and awareness, and we've been cleaning up the communities with their support and their help. So I just want to thank them for being here today and welcome them to our City Hall. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, council member. My name is Meredith McCarthy. I'm Director of Programs at Heal the Bay. And... There you go. Sorry. I just wanted to share with you some incredible success that we had this past September. It seems like we never get to celebrate as much as we should. But Coastal Cleanup Day, this is its 19th year as a community event. Coastal Cleanup Day took place at 72 sites in the County of Los Angeles. We had 12,645 volunteers. We collected 183,000 pounds of trash, 2,106 pounds of recycles. It's an incredible amount of trash that we removed from our communities, from our watersheds to prevent it from polluting our rivers, our creeks, and our coast. And I'm here today specifically to thank the city of Los Angeles. Out of those 72 sites, 14 sites were within the city of Los Angeles. We had 2,300 volunteers, and we collected 142,000 pounds of trash from our city streets. That's a total of 143 pounds of total debris removed from the city of Los Angeles. That accounted for 77% of all the trash we collected. And when you empower these neighborhoods and these communities, and you make this connection between community health and environmental health, the light bulbs go off. And we have no better supporters than the young people in our city council district. So I just wanted to come today to thank especially Council Member Cardenas for being so supportive. And I'd like to read off a few other very special people that we would like to notice today. We had cleanup sites in the following city council district. Council Member Eric Garcetti, Council Member Tony Cardenas, Council Member Ed Reyes, Council Member Janice Hahn, Council Member Wendy Gruel. I'd also like to specifically thank the Board of Public Works. We had an unprecedented partnership this year, especially Commissioner Cynthia Ruiz, Director Enrique Zaldivar, the Bureau of Sanitation. We couldn't have done it without them. And I'd like to especially thank Vladimir Campos, who was extraordinary partner in this endeavor. Also, the Office of Community Beautification was a wonderful, wonderful partner with Director Paul Rax. And I'd also like to specifically pat Maria Sheets on the back. We also couldn't have done it without her. It takes so many partners, including the Bureau of Street Services, Director William Robertson. All of these partners come together to make this possible, and together with the city's help, the nonprofits' help, and just community groups and churches, and we did it. And it's something that will continue to grow and grow and grow. So on behalf of Heal the Bay, I'd like to thank the city of Los Angeles for its incredible support.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cardenas?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. President, for giving me the opportunity to have Heal the Bay give their thanks to all of the city of Los Angeles. But one more time, I'd like to say thank you to the Department of Sanitation, from the people on the ground to the head of the department. I think it's important for everybody to understand, when you hear somebody say that in a cleanup around the city, we collected over 100 tons, that trash has to go somewhere, and we have to be responsible for it. That means that the Department of Sanitation stepped up and really dealt with this issue and was able to do it in such a professional manner. And I think it's important for us to recognize that we have some incredible, world-class departments, and the Department of Sanitation of the city of Los Angeles is probably the best of the best in the country. So thank you so much for responding, for being there, and being able to handle so much trash all at once. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and congratulations to Heal the Bay and to all the council members who participated in what is an ongoing great tradition of Southern California. And thank you for being here. With that, we do have a quorum with Mr. Alarcon, so if we can please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Wezar, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present, and a quorum is presented.
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right. Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Weiss seconds. Without objection, those minutes will be approved. Next order of business.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Parks moves. Mr. Wezar seconds. Without objection, those also will be approved.
Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there's a flag salute.
Okay. If I can ask everybody to please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance, and Mr. Smith, would you be kind enough to lead us?
Ladies and gentlemen, if you'd please place your hand over your heart and repeat with me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next order of business, please.
Items 1 and 2, our street lighting district items, notice for public hearing. Council should continue the hearings and present the ordinances on December 16.
All right, without objection, we'll continue those till the 16th. Next order.
Items 3 through 7, our street lighting district ordinances, notice for public hearing. Council should have 12 members. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please. And I believe we have a card on 8. We'll call that special as well for a card from the public. Next items.
Items 9 through 25 are items for which public hearings have been held. On item 16, there is a request to continue that to December 3rd.
Okay. Is there any objection to continuing that? If not, we will continue that till... Sorry, December 3rd, you said?
December 3rd.
December 3rd. Specialists, colleagues, Mr. Wezar?
Number 9.
Number 9 for Mr. Wezar. Mr. Smith?
7, 12, 23, 24, and 25. And if we could have them heard together, please.
Okay. Without objection, we will do that. Any other specials? Mr. Parks?
Just like to move the joint report on 22.
Okay. We'll move the joint report on 22. Mr. Cardenas?
And for Ms. Hahn.
Okay. Thank you very much. And let's go ahead then on the balance, and please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
And 17, let's end forthwith without objection, please. All items will go forthwith today without objection due to the recess for Thanksgiving. Next items, please.
Items 26 through 48 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. There is a request on items 28 and 29 to continue those one day to tomorrow, November 26th.
Okay. If there's no objection, we'll continue that one day. Do we have any cards from the public on any of the other items?
Mr. President, there are cards on 32, 34, 39.
Okay. We will call those special for cards from the public and open and close the public hearings on the remainder. Any special items from this series? If not, let's take the balance. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Those are approved. If we can call the roll for the special meeting, please.
Actually, it's a supplemental agenda, Mr. President.
Supplemental agenda, okay.
On the supplemental agenda, items 49 through 56 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. And there is a technical amendment on item 54. The correct transfer amount should be 375,300.
Okay. Without objection, we will accept that. I'll move that and we'll accept it as a friendly amendment. On 49, we have a card from the public. Otherwise, we will open and close the remaining public hearings. Any specials? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on the balance and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay. Those are approved. That will take us back to public comment. This is now time for general public comments. This is for items that are not on our agenda today, but nevertheless, under the jurisdiction of the city of Los Angeles, we do have a timer there to help our speakers guide their comments. It's two minutes of general public comments. We welcome first Nicolas Gutierrez as our first speaker, and after that is Kieran Doherty.
Good morning. Good morning, members of the Los Angeles City Council. I'd like to take a minute of your time to address an issue that should be on your minds. It was brought up at the last city council meeting, and you'll be, I believe, discussing it at the next city council meeting. And today, I'm speaking on behalf of a specific individual that this city has jurisdiction over. His name is Billy. He is the elephant at the Los Angeles Zoo, and this council is deciding whether or not to go ahead and send him to a sanctuary or to keep him at the Los Angeles Zoo and go ahead with the project there. A few things that I'd like to bring up about Billy. When it comes to watching any animal, any animal, doesn't matter if it's a farm animal, doesn't matter if it's a pet, or it doesn't matter if it's an animal in the wild or one that's in the zoo, an important thing that has to be remembered is that time and patience is required in order to learn all of the habits and the idiosyncrasies of that animal. And that's what's important here. For people who go to the zoo, for people who see Billy, sometimes they'll go up to him and they'll spend just a few minutes of their time actually observing him and then move on to the other animals that are there. I understand that sometimes when people go to zoos, that's what they want to do. They want to see as many animals as they can. But it's important, especially for an animal like him, in order to appreciate everything that he does, in order to see all of the things that he does, time is important. To be able to go up to him and give him the time, and give him the respect that he deserves as an animal deserving of our time. Because you'll get to see all these things that many people don't get to see. You'll get to see him pick up his tire, his large tire in his enclosure, and throw it to the other side of the exhibit. You'll get to see him play with his suspended ball that's hanging in his enclosure. You'll get to see him interact with his keepers. You'll get to see so many things that you wouldn't get to see otherwise. So in these last few seconds, I'd like to say, if you have time this week before you have to make a decision on this next week, please, I implore all of you, come to the zoo and spend a little bit of your time with Billy.
Thank you for your comments. Kieran Doherty would be our next speaker? I hope I didn't butcher that. Is that right?
No, it's good. Kieran. Hi, my name is Kieran, and I am speaking in support of the Los Angeles Zoo Pachyderm Forest. I'm not an actress, so clearly I'm not an expert. I do, however, belong to a number of conservation organizations, one of them being GLAZA. The LA Zoo is part of AZA, and you should all be aware that AZA creditates...
Okay, without objection, we will do that. Any other specials? Mr. Parks?
Just like to move the joint report on twenty-two.
Okay, we'll move the joint report on twenty-two. And Mr. Cardenas?
And for Ms. Hahn.
Okay, thank you very much. And let's go ahead then on the balance, and please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
And seventeen, let's end forthwith without objection, please. All items will go forthwith today without objection due to the recess for Thanksgiving. Next items, please.
Items twenty-six through forty-eight are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. There is a request on items twenty-eight and twenty-nine to continue those one day to tomorrow, November twenty-sixth.
Okay. If there's no objection, we'll continue that one day. Do we have any cards from the public on any of the other items?
Mr. President, there are cards on thirty-two, thirty-four, thirty-nine.
Okay. We will call those special for cards from the public and open and close the public hearings on the remainder. Any special items from this series? If not, let's take the balance. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. If we can call the roll for the special meeting, please.
Actually, it's a supplemental agenda.
Supplemental agenda, okay.
On the supplemental agenda, items forty-nine through fifty-six are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration. And there is a technical amendment on item fifty-four. The correct transfer amount should be three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-three-hundred.
Okay, without objection, we will accept that. I'll move that and accept it as a friendly amendment. On forty-nine, we have a card from the public. Otherwise, we will open and close the remaining public hearings. Any specials? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on the balance and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, those are approved. That will take us back to public comment. This is now time for general public comments. This is for items that are not on our agenda today, but nevertheless, under the jurisdiction of the city of Los Angeles, we do have a timer there to help our speakers guide their comments. It's two minutes of general public comments. We welcome first Nicholas Gutierrez as our first speaker, and after that is Kieran Doherty.
Good morning.
Good morning, members of the Los Angeles City Council. I'd like to take a minute of your time to address an issue that should be on your minds. It was brought up at the last city council meeting, and you'll be, I believe, discussing it at the next city council meeting. And today, I'm speaking on behalf of a specific individual that this city has jurisdiction over. His name is Billy. He is the elephant at the Los Angeles Zoo, and this council is deciding whether or not to go ahead and send him to a sanctuary or to keep him at the Los Angeles Zoo and go ahead with the project there. A few things that I'd like to bring up about Billy. When it comes to watching any animal, any animal, doesn't matter if it's a farm animal, doesn't matter if it's a pet, or it doesn't matter if it's an animal in the wild or one that's in the zoo, an important thing that has to be remembered is that time and patience is required in order to learn all of the habits and the idiosyncrasies of that animal. And that's what's important here. For people who go to the zoo, for people who see Billy, sometimes they'll go up to him, and they'll spend just a few minutes of their time actually observing him, and then move on to the other animals that are there. I understand that sometimes when people go to zoos, that's what they want to do. They want to see as many animals as they can. But it's important, especially for an animal like him, in order to appreciate everything that he does, in order to see all of the things that he does, time is important. To be able to go up to him and give him the time, and give him the respect that he deserves as an animal deserving of our time. Because you'll get to see all these things that many people don't get to see. You'll get to see him pick up his tire, his large tire in his enclosure, and throw it to the other side of the exhibit. You'll get to see him play with his suspended ball that's hanging in his enclosure. You'll get to see him interact with his keepers. You'll get to see so many things that you wouldn't get to see otherwise. So in these last few seconds, I'd like to say, if you have time this week before you have to make a decision on this next week, please, I implore all of you, come to the zoo and spend a little bit of your time with Billy.
Thank you for your comments. Kieran Doherty would be our next speaker. I hope I didn't butcher that, is that right?
No, it's good. Kieran. Hi, my name is Kieran, and I am speaking in support of the Los Angeles Zoo Pachyderm Forest. I'm not an actress, so clearly, I'm not an expert. I do, however, belong to a number of conservation organizations, one of them being GLAZA. The L.A. Zoo is part of AZA, and you should all be aware that AZA-credited institutions must meet certain health, safety, enrichment, and diet standards, and the L.A. Zoo surpasses these standards. Most sanctuaries don't even meet these standards. Did you know a twenty-six-year-old elephant died at PAWS Sanctuary less than two months ago? Just a reminder, the average lifespan of an Asian elephant is about forty-five years old. Did you know that there's no breeding in sanctuaries? So either Billy will be by himself or potentially castrated. With Asian elephant populations plummeting due to human encroachment, this species is dying. If all elephants were to be sent to non-breeding institutions, this species will die out. That is why these conservation programs are so important to the survival of these species. And building a sanctuary in Silmar, which is a burn area, doesn't sound like you're thinking in the best interest of the individual or the species. Did you know that elephants in sanctuaries can and do suffer from ailments the same as any wild or captive elephants? And that most sanctuaries don't have staff qualified to treat these ailments on a weekly, let alone daily, basis? The L.A. Zoo does. Did you know that elephants in sanctuaries can spend most of their time on concrete or dried, on concrete or compacted dirt or in a barn? And when they are released, they don't travel, they just travel to where the food is placed and don't really take advantage of all the acreage available to them. Did you know that sanctuaries require a large donation to see their elephants? This will eliminate the possibility for schoolchildren to experience the same, experience and be inspired by these beautiful animals. The zoo, with its staff and volunteers, offers a wonderful opportunity to be inspired by the natural world around them, fostering future conservationists. If you're truly acting in the best interest of Billy, you will listen to the experts and not the actors. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments today. Richard Kearns is our next speaker. After that, we'll go out to Van Nuys and hear from Donna Pearman. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Richard Kearns. I'm a fifty-seven-year-old gay man alive with AIDS for more than twenty years. I'm an AIDS activist and long-term survivor. I'm a medical cannabis patient and advocate. I publish a website called aidsright.org, a cross between journalism and poetry. I'm here today to see if there has been a response to your letter to the city attorney inquiring to the status of the medical cannabis ordinance. I suspect you have heard nothing. I call on the city attorney, on City Attorney Delgado to respond to your letter by World AIDS Day next week. Let us know what's happening. Here's a poem. Blood angers my head, my face, my skin, my muscles, my heart, and I have learned to draw breath and utter my spirit there on the bright council floor, dressed dark and hat-wearing, standing for you, standing for me, standing for standing, singing a song that steals your breath to injustice in Birmingham here, today, and always. Just law is good medicine. Just law is good medicine. AIDS is a political disease. Until there is social change, there will not be a cure for it. If you are uninfected, there will not be a vaccine to protect you until there is social change. Safe access to medical cannabis is both a political and a medical issue. It is social change. L.A.'s medical cannabis ordinance is an example of the renewal of justice in the body of law. The DEA acknowledges no unjust law, only citizen criminals, voters who must be subdued, jailed, and silenced. What do you suppose the DEA is doing for World AIDS Day? I know what the medical cannabis community is doing. This will be the third year we've observed World AIDS Day in the Southland Medical Clinics. I will come by to share a new poem with you next week as part of my celebration of that, and look forward to hearing the Attorney General's response. Just law is good medicine. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns. Our next speaker is in Van Nuys. It's Donna Pearman. After that will be Miriam Fogler, also in Van Nuys. Good morning, Ms. Pearman.
Good morning, Council, I mean, Garcetti. Anyway, Cardenas, I want to bring in the English people and also on that environment. Anyway, I want to mention, I think it's a bad idea to take the city council off public TV. Not everybody can see you at the ten o'clock hour, so it doesn't help to put it on computer only. Need to please stop this from happening because we need to see, we need to the things that you pass. You are not in a fishbowl. I'm sorry, Councilman Rosenthal is not here. I wanted to warn him that a CRA will come in his area with the MTA subway to the sea. They always find a way to hold, build projects wherever they can find. When they build, the people won't be afford the raised rent. I repeat to Councilman Cardenas also, they will put CRA in your area against the wishes of your constituents. We'll prop our extensions along Van Nuys Boulevard to Westwood. It will be a CRA dream. I'm mad about the inconsistency of the buses to West Los Angeles, the seven-twenty Santa Monica doesn't run nearly as often as it should in the morning. It's so crowded, the driver can't see over us. Get rid of the seven-twenty short line to the federal building in the morning and make it all go to Santa Monica. I don't real, I don't believe the subway to the sea will stop at Bundy, Wilshire and Bundy. I don't want to take the subway, subway every day. There's liable for danger, and if we have an earthquake, and even a lot more people will be killed. I'd like to thank Councilman Tom Laban for fighting for our rights with the Elephant Exhibit. We voted for it, and the zoo is in your area, and you know what the zoo needs. I'd like to thank you for fighting for our district, and that's it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Donna. Our next speaker is Miriam Fogler, and after that, Rick Nightingale. Good morning.
Good morning. I wanted to make a point of, point here that the state of California is having a fiscal crisis. They're talking about getting rid of essential services and not cutting the big, you know, the pork barrels, that they've been asking other workers to take a cut and also take a vacation off. Well, you know what? You know, the workers work very hard, and I don't, especially the middle-class people who are down there below one-hundred-and-fifty thousand. They're hard-working men and women, and they don't deserve getting pay cuts. But I'll tell you who needs to get pay cuts. People like the L.A., you know, the city council, the top brass officials like Nahai, the president of the Department of Water and Power, they need to all take pay cuts and no more raises for you from the municipal judges. It's not right that we have to be, have to have our union, have to come before you for a vote for our raises when you don't have to get scrutinized and asked for a raise in the public. So this has got to stop. And secondly, you know, the benefits are a factor, too. So that's important to keep. But, you know, cutting the middle class and low, you know, people below one-hundred-and-fifty thousand, like, I guess Rick Nightingale is going to speak against me. I just want to let you know that this is a very bad thing against middle-class people and low-income. He's middle-class himself, so just letting you know. So you're going to be cut, too. Prop R has maybe been passed, but folks, don't kid yourself. CRA will be writing on the, on the back of the, the coattails of the MTA and L.A. USD after they use power imminent domain and also using, taking away our essential services, our property tax money that goes to the city instead of going to CRA. When they build up their new projects, that's where they get the taxing money away from our police fire. And that's why all these other taxes and fees are being raised on us, because you people keep letting them go away with all their lavish projects.
Our next speaker is Rick Nightingale, also in Van Nuys. Then we'll come back here to council chambers, and Mort Allen will be our next speaker. Good morning, Mr. Nightingale.
Good morning, Rick Nightingale. My speech is basically about free speech. You know, you see on the news, a lot of things are going on, and I'll tell you, I sure hope L.A. don't become like San Francisco. I mean, I believe in everybody's equal. I believe in everybody's free. They can do what they want on their dime and in their area. But when you turn around and press your beliefs and so forth on other people that don't want to hear it, want it, or otherwise, then they have no reason or, as far as I'm concerned, no right to do that. Regarding like, for instance, like this May Day thing, sure, those people made out like a bandit. They know, everybody knows what they're doing. They turn around, you give them a permit. I don't even know if they had a permit to turn around and have that. Now they're going to collect all this money because the police supposedly did something wrong, and I still say they didn't. They handled it the way it's supposed to, because I've had that kind of training. But no, they got paid off, so it was a free speech thing. Same as this regarding, excuse me, the gay rights movement and so forth, letting them go through Hollywood, closed streets. That means they blocked me off if I was down there. They took my freedom away from me. That's against the law. But no, you didn't want to do anything because now the LAPD, they've got to watch what they do, and you better not push nobody because if they don't want to move, then they can stay there. That's not right. It's just flat not right, what's going on. I don't know what it's coming to, but it's, it looks like the more violence people do, you're afraid of them, so you let it get away. If they're in a group, you don't want to contend with it because you're afraid that they're going to sue, and the problem is, is that, it looks like the attorney has to hire every time they go, they're going to fight the people so they don't get caught in some type of a situation. It's just unbelievable what the C-Los Angeles is going to do, and like hate crime. It better be taken out of the dictionary, crime, hate crime, because everybody goes under this thing, and it's not fair, and you, it's just, the same as the lesbians and that stuff are calling at that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nightingale. Our next speaker is here in council chambers, and that is Mort Allen. After that, we'll hear from Sean Murphy. Very good morning, Mr. Allen.
Good morning. I just wanted to kind of give you an update. I don't want anybody to worry about digital billboards. Everyone will be down in about three months. Some of you remember, I told you that last February, I got a call from somebody in building the safety saying they were putting a digital on a shopping center of mine on the roof, and that they thought it would kill people because it was six tons on the pole, and they couldn't believe I signed the permit. I said I didn't. We discovered the permit was forged. We then found out that Clear Channel had forged a twenty-foot easement on my property. So we started looking into it, and their answer was, "We're too big. You can't fight us." So I hired two of the top trial attorneys in the country, and we've been in court. In fact, last week, we, we took the deposition of Paul Meyer, the chairman of the board of Clear Channel. He told us every person in this city that's been paid money. We have more than anything on here. We then did checking. We found out every permit, including Silver Lake, has been forged, where they sign that they're the owner's authorized representative. It puts down the property owner, then it says owner builder, and then they sign that they're the legal authorized representative, which you can't do. We've also dug into the fact that, oh, let me just say, the trial is February eleventh, and we expect that to be a national event. The settlement agreement is also in court with us. That is totally illegal, and we expect that to be, you people, I don't know how many of you know, you all signed a two-page settlement agreement that council signed. One week later, the attorneys from Arellam and Ellis snuck in a forty-four-page settlement agreement that not one of you signed or saw, okay? It is so unconstitutional. It says the property owner has no rights, they're third parties. It says the city has no rights, the homeowner cannot sue the billboard company, has to sue the city. So just wanted to keep you updated on it, and it's happening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Allen. We appreciate your work on that. Sean Murphy is our next speaker. After that will be Arnold Sacks.
Good morning, sitting council. Happy Thanksgiving to all of you. Let's give Yvonne Bradway Burke for an outstanding job she did in the L.A.'s city supervisor's job. She should be, she should be applied for the job well done she's done for the past years, fifteen years. I heard on Terry Anderson's show, Arnold Sacks spoke briefly about the Jamil's Law. Please sign the petition for Jamil's Law for the new year. Please let Jamil's Law pass this, this, next year in '09. We need to pass Jamil's Law. I don't want to see another high school kid get killed. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Happy Thanksgiving to you, too. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker for our general public comment.
Good morning, council. Thank you, Arnold Sacks. Very quickly, the speaker prior to the last one, he wasn't, his involvement, he was involved in trying to save his property. The question would be, what's the city attorney's been up to? If this gentleman can find out this information about all these items being forged by one of the top advertisers in the city, wake up Mr. City Attorney's Office. Seems to be on everybody's mind that we have a budget crisis, and there were some stories in here. I'm waiting to find out what's the story, the status on contract renegotiations that were just signed. There was a big deal meant in that, the new negotiations that stated that if the city faces a budget deficit or a crisis, that the contracts can be renegotiated. What's the status on that? There was no mention, I believe Councilman Zine a few weeks ago mentioned taking a pay cut. I see no mention of that in front of the board or the city council. I don't see any elimination of all unnecessary perks for the council. I certainly hope the council not planning on doing any traveling in the next couple of years because of the budget constraints that are being forced, or the budget cuts that are being forced onto the public. And then I'd also like to point out, a couple of weeks ago, before the election, there was an article in the L.A. Times regarding the Prop A funds. And in this article, it stated that each gang murder costs one-point-six-seven million dollars. Yet in September, Councilman Cardenas was speaking regarding the mayor's initiative with the gangs and this forty-four nonprofits that are associated with that, and he mentioned that each murder costs one million dollars to investigate, gang-wise. Difference of six-hundred thousand dollars. Funds say there was three-hundred-and-ninety-four murders in L.A. Multiply that by six-hundred thousand, six-hundred thousand dollars, and you'll get quite a bit of budget money right there.
Appreciate your comments. That will close our general public comments for today. We can take up the items called special. I think we're going to hold the ordinances, but why don't we take the public comments on those? The first one is on item five. I'm sorry, Mr. Sacks, I know you're about to sit down, but why don't you come forward on item number five, please?
Item number five, item number five, as a matter of fact, all the ordinances address boundaries for the city lighting districts. And so I come before again the council. Last week, you had a city lighting district, the Mid-City Expedition Light Rail Transit Project Segment A-two Lighting District. All these districts that are listed in today's agenda are listed by street, so you have an idea of what the boundaries are. Could you please, from the council or what department, would elucid, allow for the boundaries of what exactly the Mid-City Expedition Light Rail Transit Project Segment A-two Lighting District is? Thank you again.
Thank you. That will close our public comment on that item. I believe we're going to hold that till we have twelve members. We will take out public comment on number eight next. Miriam Fogler in Van Nuys on item eight.
Good morning. Hello. Okay, you know, this is a very bad project because this one here doesn't have, not getting any, can't get any private, public money because, I mean, private money, because it's being all funded by CRA folks, and it's not going to go anywhere. Because the agency, what they do, they're going to gulp up all this money that these buildings are sending right now to the city, they're going to tear these buildings down. It's the only way they can do it, and they're going to do it. You're in the way of a big project, they're going to do it, okay? And they're going to rebuild their own, put up a building of their own size, and, you know, that's what they're doing. They're going to take all this taxing money away from the city of Los Angeles, folks, and they're going to pass it on to us with more fees, more taxes, more expensive things. So I'm letting you know now, the Great Avenue Project cannot proceed because you need to stop this, this thing. Ernie Bernardi, thirty years ago, put two-point-four-million-dollar cap for this downtown from CRAs, and you folks just let it, you know, just took it off when he died. And that's a terrible mockery because his name should be down there instead of that, should be Ernie Bernardi's Hall here, not that other, that other one, that crooked one. I'm not going to even say his name. I hope he's rotting in hell. So I'm just letting you know that all the funding, folks, you're giving all the CRA the money, they're going to take all the city's money away for the general fund. That's where it goes. So, you're going to lose your police, you're going to lose your fire, you're going to lose all the things unless you pay for it. They have to take it from someone, somewhere, to make it up. And that's what's happening in 58 counties throughout the state of California. All the CRAs are taking all the money from the state of California, from our cities, from our county, and that's what they have to do. They have to raise your taxes to pay for all these projects. So, nothing is a free lunch. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler. And we will hold eight on the table as well for 12 members. If we can take up the next item called special, please.
Item nine was called special by Councilmember Weezer, and he has requested that matter be continued one day to November 26th.
Okay. Is there any objection to continuing that for one day? If not, we'll continue that till November 26th tomorrow. Next item called special, please.
Item 10 was called special for Councilmember Hahn, who I don't believe is here yet.
Okay, we'll hold that on the desk. Next items?
Items 11, 12, 23, 24, and 25 were called special by Councilmember Smith.
Mr. Smith, on items 11, 12, 23 through 25.
Thank you, Mr. President. Briefly, these are five items that are combined together that relate to the Sunshine Canyon landfill. The CLA, and I want to recommend, highly commend Mr. Miller for negotiating this over the period of almost two years, a year and a half, has done a tremendous job of putting together a package that really benefits the city of L.A. There will be some of those concern in my community about certain elements of it, but this will allow us to do a number of things. First of all, it creates a revenue sharing agreement that can proceed today with the county of L.A. It combines the county and city landfills into one. That was a requirement placed on the city in our own land use, but there was to be a five-year waiting period. It moves forward that waiting period to combine the two landfills into one landfill for operational reasons. One, that BFI went to the state of California and got them to change the LEA requirements that really was going to take away authority from the city of L.A. Instead, we formed, with this council's approval, a LEA here in the city of L.A., which now have some control. But combining the two landfills is important to that LEA. Secondly, it gives the LEA authority for citation and give them badge authority to make changes and corrections for anything that's going on improperly as the Sunshine Canyon landfill. It expands the LEA ordinance, which is number 25, contingent upon the publication of all of these ordinances together. It recognizes the land use authority that was presented by the city zoning administrator and the planning department, and I thank them for doing this. It says we will waive really the requirements for five years because they have been substantially met. Three of the ordinances before you are creating an ATL fee. The advanced landfill fee will go into a center, a fee for the city of L.A. that will allow us to be applied toward any future construction or planned construction of a facility that will take the city of L.A.'s trash and convert it into energy or any other alternative to landfilling, which this council has supported for the last couple of years, and I appreciate that very much. Finally, there is a requirement that we post this for 10 days. So, the action we're taking today is just to put forward, move forward of all the agreements that are before you in items, all the five items, and saying that we will come back with the final ordinances, the final agreements on 10-day notification by December 9th. In conclusion, ladies and gentlemen, this moves forward Phase Two of the landfill. It allows BFI to operate more openly. I don't want to become known as the proponent of BFI, but I think it's in the best interest of the city of L.A. that we move forward this. It exacts new fees on landfilling that goes on there. It puts it in a fund for the city of L.A. to allow us to continue our proposals to go forward on finding alternatives to landfilling. I know something Mr. Allen and I, Condon and I, have been talking about for years, getting out of landfilling. This makes that possible. So, I think what you have here is a package that was negotiated, a hard negotiation with the county, that really will solve many of the city's problems, and it'll give us control over the landfill that we had lost, we now regain, and it gives us an opportunity to raise the funds we need to go forward in finding alternatives to landfilling. This is a good proposal. I thank Ms. Perry for moving her through her committee. I thank the CLA and the Department of Planning and all those others involved with the LEA in moving this forward, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and open the roll.
And, Mr. President, the amendments on 12, 24, 25 have been circulated.
Right. Those are accepted as friendly without objection. So, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those items are approved, like all items today, they will go forthwith. Next item called special, please.
Item 32 called special for cards.
We did have a card come in on 29, I think, from Van Nuys. So, if we can actually reconsider 29. Oh, it was continued, I'm sorry. My apologies. Ms. Perriman, that was continued, so we'll keep that in the record. Item 32, Arnold Sacks is our speaker on this item.
Thank you again, Arnold Sacks. This community benefit contribution of $200,000, is this received by the CRA? Is this received by the community in Hollywood? And again, as always, another advertising, $200,000. I wonder just how much the space is actually worth. Was there a cost analysis done so that we could find out exactly what they're getting for this space? As was done, wait, it wasn't done at the convention center. They just got $2 million for the city, for the three large graphic signs, multi-graphic signs, and the 14 other signs that go along with it. Another job well done. Thank you again.
Thank you. That'll close our comments on item 32. If we can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Mr. Sacks, I think you're next on item 34. If you want to come forward. Item 34 is before us.
Yes, 34 is a, thank you, Arnold Sacks. 34 is regards to a graffiti award. I've come before the council and mentioned the fact that there's a company that operates at LAX, administer, not administrator, Authorized Taxi Cab Supervision, that has taken a city seal unauthorized, put it on their uniforms as a logo.
I'm sorry, sir, we're talking about a reward for a specific act of graffiti vandalism. I know you've made, tried to make that connection before, that somehow that is graffiti vandalism.
It's graffiti, sir.
But that is out of order.
I look for the city council.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sacks, it's out of order. Do you have anything to say about the specific one?
I look for the city council to put a motion forward to investigate the graffiti that's occurring at Lawa.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you. That will close our comments on this item. Please open the roll on 34. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item called special, please.
Item 39 called special for cards.
All right, Ms. Fogler, item 39 is before us, and then we'll hear from Donna Perriman on the same one.
She walked away.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Perriman, and we'll see if she comes back. You start first.
Okay. Anyway, again, we have too many fee waivers. That's why people are turning against public service employees like local, state, and federal employees, feeling that people should pay for the deficit. Why should city employees get a cut when you continue to waive everything that moves? We can't continue always waiving these parties, charity events, shouldn't, and the charity events shouldn't be forced on people. People who feel they can afford them can pay for these events. Why doesn't the city council pay for some of these events? They can go for their event or have a great big party with the politicians, and they can come up and they say which ones they want to donate to. And like, we had one here that's $20,000. 36 Annual American Music Awards for $20,000. First Annual Touch of Love Thanksgiving Day on my birthday, November 27th. By the way, my birthday is this, on Thanksgiving this year. 4,040. And Camino New Auto Charter Academy Dance Studio Grand Opening, $3,000. People in Progress Thanksgiving Celebration, $3,000. Now, some of these things are nice events. There should be another way to pay for these things instead of automatically taking it out of this city money. Because it's going to hurt the very, very person they want to help. These people that are going to these things, these Thanksgiving things, are also paying for these things, and to put them further into debt. And so, we need to get rid of these fee waivers because they're very wrong, and we can't afford it. And we need the money for more important things, like we could have used the money for Genesis Kids. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Did Ms. Fogler come back? Do not think she did.
No, not yet.
But thank you very much, Ms. Perriman, and a happy birthday to you as well. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 49 called special for cards.
All right, Ms. Fogler, again. It's not there in Van Nuys, okay? And Mr. Sacks, if you'd like to come forward on 39? All right, Mr. Sacks on this item?
Yes, I'd like to thank the city council, another special event. I'd like to, I don't know, reward the city council for their effort they did with the marathon. The fact that that's a special event that somehow snuck in front of the city council for a change of date from, it's normally held Sunday, to a Monday. And then, the proprietors of the event were able to change it from the Monday that was chosen by city council to a Monday of their choice, which turns out to be Memorial Day. How that did not appear before city council as another special event? Don't know. But what's even more amazing is the fact that if they wanted to change back to the Sunday that the event was normally held on, or has been held on for the last 25 years, they wouldn't be allowed because it's now illegal to have a marathon on a Sunday. So, the question I have is, since the city sponsors a triathlon, and the triathlon includes a swimming, a bicycling event, and a marathon, will that also have to be held on a Monday as the new law states that was passed to accommodate the Frank McCourt and the Dodger, the owner of the Dodgers, so that he could run his marathon on his chose, on the date that he chose? And also, would like to know the added expenses that'll be incurred because the marathon is going to be held on Memorial Day, which is a date that is usually reserved by the MTA for limited services. Since 25,000 people have run in the last marathon, just exactly how much more will that cost the city in its budgetary crisis? As always, thank you for your time, your answers, and your attention.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sacks. Ms. Fogler is back on this item. Ms. Fogler, if you'd like to come forward.
Thank you. I would hope that you would give me the extended time for 39 as well. There's so many here that I would like to have the extra time. The, I don't know why, the mayor asked you to put a moratorium on these things. I don't know why, but, you know, this should be only related to city services. It shouldn't be extra things for like the 36 Annual American Music Awards, First Annual Touch of Love, this is a new one. So, I, this is kind of like a throwing away money here. Like, the Veterans' Holiday was good, but that sure shouldn't be costing us so much money. They should be getting, people should be donating to the veterans to go have that thing that you had here at the, at the Hanukkah carnival. I don't know why the, we need to get donations, folks. Don't have to have the city picking up all the costs since they won't put a stop moratorium, the stuff they're spending here like, like Congress does. And then Obama will just sign all away because he's, he's a liberal. Don't forget, he's a Democrat, folks. You know, going the other way is bad. He said, you know, like, you know, the mayor tells you to put a stop on this, but actually, Obama's asking, is not doing it. So, this is really bad Obama part. And the mayor went to him and talked to him. So, you people don't understand how to put a stop to spending and stay off your debts because paying off your debts, then you'll be able to return the essential services here, you know? And we won't, and then the economy will start to pick up. People will start creating jobs if you stop taking money away from taxing the people and stop putting added fees on them for these things. Then you would have jobs being created out there, folks. This is capitalism. You know, this is just the way it works here. We're not a communist country where we go and have handouts like Wall Street. And I don't expect the city council to do the same thing here, too, with Obama. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna Perriman is our next speaker on this item.
Okay. Okay, let's go on these fee waivers. Still, you don't know the difference between separation of church and state, the annual Winter Wonderland toy giveaway for 2,719. Certainly, that can be done around the Christians or certain events where they ask for people who want to give to these things, they can be able to give it to. And that, here's another one. 41, 41st Annual Christmas Parade and Festival on December 6, 3,952. That's also separation of church and state. Why, it's not fair for everyone to be going for these things that won't go to these Christmas parades and don't believe in Christmas. And so, you got to think about the Muslims and the Jews and the people that just don't want to spend for the money for all these parades. Certainly, there's ways that they can get, get money for these, save up money for these for the people who want to give them. That's the big thing, is this people are being forced to waive all these things. We're paying for it. You're not paying for these things. If you want these events over there, then you pay for these events. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and prepare the roll on this item and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Ms. Fogler, do you want to come forward on 39? I know you were in the restroom. We'll hear from Ms. Fogler on 39.
What we need to do is pay off our debts, not to be adding more money for these special events, folks. Because this way, we can get donations from people. If they have money to spend, then they'll be paying for donation, they'll give donations to these events. Why should a city pick up the tab and shut, you know, block off streets? And, you know, we have to do this, you know, the city has to do this. They have, it costs money. So, what we need to do is, by creating jobs, is reducing our debt. When you leave the money, put the money back flowing into the economy, then the money will start flowing in, and the people will be able to create jobs on their own. They don't need handouts, like, like, I don't know, and the housing, too. You don't need to have handouts, folks. All you have to do is creating a jobs. Create jobs, but stop the debts the government is accumulating. We got to stop the government accumulating using pork barrels and stop the CRAs and the special event fees. This is really bad. That's why you're paying more and more, and it's just going to be a downfall for all of us if you don't stop this thing. Because you got to have control of yourselves. Just let, you know, the government's using a credit card just like you are, and that's not good. And we need to get rid of the Federal Reserve. That's another one. We need to bring back the gold and bring it back into the, into our government. You know, folks, if we use the government right, it'll work very well. The same people that are in there, that are part of the public here, obviously don't, don't want to do anything. They just want the whole thing to go down. It's the best, best system we ever had, and I love this country, and I love the United States, I love America, I love everybody here. I love the city, I love the county, just come on, people. We can get it together. And we know we have a problem overseas with Russia and China. It's very bad out there. We need to get ourselves together. We need to be united. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have a special one, I believe?
Yes, Mr. President, there is a special one by Councilmember Wesson, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney, please speak to the findings.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the posting of today's agenda, the Department of Aging has identified two interim senior service providers that have agreed to take over the responsibilities of Delta Sigma Theta Life Development. Immediate action is required because Delta Sigma will stop providing senior services on November 30th. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Okay. Anybody else on the findings? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right. Pursuant to Rule 23, we now have this special item before us. Anybody wishing to be heard on it? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right. That is approved. We, forthwith on everything today. We have some items we are holding. It looks unlikely that we are going to get 12 members, so why don't we give the, or we could continue the ordinances for a day and see if we have 12 members tomorrow, or we can do the first readings. Any preference for anybody on those ordinances? Okay, let's, let's take up the ordinances then. Three through eight first. If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those will go over to a second reading. And if we can continue item number 10 for Ms. Hahn until tomorrow. That objection, we will continue that. Next order of business.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Those are posted and referred.
Desk is clear.
All right. Any business announcements, folks? If not, do we have any adjourning motions today? Any adjourning motions? If we, do we have any adjourning, yes. Mr. Parks, you have an adjourning motion or announcement?
Yes.
Which, which one?
Adjourning motion.
Okay. If I could ask everybody to please rise for adjourning motions. And just before your adjourning motion, Mr. Alarcon, if you would stand and be recognized for your birthday yesterday, we want to wish you a happy birthday. He said he is now the speed limit. We're not sure what year that speed limit was. We hope it's the past speed limit. We hope it's the past speed limit. It could be, you know, in a residential area. Uh, Mr. Alarcon, any, any birthday thoughts?
No birthday thoughts, but I did wanna make an announcement that today, at three o'clock, we'll be convening a meeting of the, uh, Education Neighborhood Council Committee to discuss the, uh, fire, uh, the recent fire and the loss of the mobile homes. Uh, this will be approximately a three-hour hearing. Uh, really, what we're trying to strive for is, as we move forward, uh, what, what are the questions that we should be raising, uh, and then we'll come back with a subsequent report. So, I want to ask the community to, uh, if they are interested in this, to please, uh, come to the hearing. Uh, this will be our first opportunity to learn. And, by the way, I wanna mention that this will be the first official joint hearing of the neighborhood council of Silmar and, uh, and the council committee. I, I believe it's the first in the, in, in the history of the neighborhood council system. So, this is truly a community meeting, but, uh, the formal process of the city of Los Angeles, again, particularly the victims, uh, all the departments, uh, the pertinent departments will be present. Uh, again, we will be asking questions more than, uh, gaining, uh, specific answers. Uh, we will do that at a subsequent time, where we have recommendations on changes that we believe should be made. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Zine?
Um, I am a member of that committee. However, we have a personnel committee meeting here at three o'clock. I will not be able to attend the community meeting, so my apologies, but I will be here for the personnel committee meeting at three.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
For informational purposes, all those who are living in the Porter Ranch, Granada Hills, Chatsworth area that were affected by the fires, both the Ceznon Fire and the Merrick Fire who came over, uh, and the Most Red Fire, the city of LA has pre-positioned, uh, sandbags and sand at all the fire stations in North Granada Hills, North Porter Ranch, and North Chatsworth, as well as near Old Melvany Park and along Ceznon in Porter Ranch. So, if you wish information about sandbagging, uh, we encourage you to call our office, eight one eight seven five six eight five zero one, for location of all the sandbag, uh, availability for those areas that were hit by the, the fires that may be subject to some sort of flooding as we look into the rain of tonight, tomorrow.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Lavant?
And, uh, as you know, Mr. Garcetti, uh, both, uh, at Fire Station eighty-two for any hillside areas in the Hollywood Hills, your district as well, Fire Station forty-four in Cypress Park, but if you have any questions, if you're in a hillside area in the Sepulveda Pass as well, uh, call three one one, and they'll direct you appropriately.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Mr. Parks for adjourning motion.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I have, uh, three adjourning motions today. I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Rosalind Tower, who passed away on September nineteenth. Uh, she was born in nineteen fifty-five in Memphis, Tennessee. She grew up in a military family. Uh, the last base she and her family served on was Bill Air Force Base in Sacramento. Uh, she then moved back to Memphis, Tennessee, worked for fourteen years with General Electric. Uh, upon returning to California, uh, she resided in Lancaster. Funeral services were held Friday, September the twenty-sixth, at West Angeles Church on South Crenshaw. Uh, she survived by, uh, her partner, Michael Carpenter, and, uh, host of family members. Like also the request, we adjourn in memory of Lance Jerome Parker, who passed away Sunday, October twentieth, at the age of forty-two, due to the complications of an aneurysm. He and his family lived for a number of years, since nineteen sixty-seven, at the ninety-six-hundred block of South Hobart. He's the manager of the Family Neighborhood Restaurant, the Family Room at El Segundo in Maine. Funeral services were held Monday, October twenty-seventh, at Holman Methodist, in terms of Zinglewood Cemetery, survived by his mother and, uh, his, uh, two siblings. Also, I'd ask you, adjourn in memory of, uh, Gordon Landry Senior, who passed away Wednesday, October twenty-second. Retired from the, uh, Department of Water and Power in nineteen eighty-two after thirty-five years of service.